Well, how was the vacation, Kate?
It was good. We went to Broken Bow.
Oh, boy.
Yes, so it was, it was good. Taught the girls how to water ski.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I grew up water skiing with my family, so it was good. Nice to take it away.
So they just sent out a boil water notice for all of that area down there.
Speaking of boil water notice, have we got any more participation in our location system?
A few, but it's, it has grown a lot.
I know, I like, it's not as bad.
Yeah.
Incident to go to vacation with, it costs time.
I mean, but percentage of people that are on the system.
Yeah, not good. But we're doing it on both. We're doing it on Facebook and we're doing it on our systems.
We're like three hundred people on Facebook.
Three hundred? That's not much better.
Jerry, is your, is your business picked up?
Um, it's, it's keeping us busy. Yeah, there's a fair amount of industrial working on the mountain.
Well, that's good.
Crystal gave us signed up. I caught you daydreaming a bit. All right, good morning, and we'll call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting, Trinity Bay Conservation District. Today is Wednesday, June 18th, 2025, 9:00 a.m. And we'll begin the meeting with invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. And keep us sustain our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in your confession, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and glory to him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and endless.
Item number three is public comment, and we do not have anyone signed up. We'll move to item four, which is approve the minutes of the regular meeting held May 14th, 2025.
I read over the minutes, Mr. President, and I didn't find any mistakes, so I make a motion to approve the second. Minutes on May, May 14th, 2025.
I have a motion of second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries. Item number five is approve financial reports from May 31st, 2025.
Yes, sir. The general fund, uh, revenues were one hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Our expenditures were three hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-two cents. We're sixty-six point seven percent into the fiscal year, and we've expended forty-seven point six-nine percent of budget. Uh, fund balances were made, or ten million, one hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and four cents. The gen- uh, the water and sewer fund, revenues were five hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-six cents. The expenditures were six hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. Again, we are sixty-six point seven percent into the fiscal year, and we've expended fifty-seven point five percent of the budget. Uh, again, a total revenue of the bank is ten million, one hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and four cents.
Make a motion to approve financial, or the financial report for May 31st.
Right.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries. Item six is to approve tax reports, May 31st, 2025.
Uh, Chambers County, we received eighty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars and fifty-eight cents, with a collection rate of ninety-six point four-four percent. Last year at this time, we received fifty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents, with a collection rate of ninety-six point eight-seven percent. Uh, Jefferson County, we received a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and nine cents, with a collection rate of ninety-four point nine-seven percent. May of last year, we received a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents, with a collection rate of ninety-four point oh-five percent.
Make a motion to approve tax reports for May 31st, 2025.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Uh, the motion carries. Item number seven is to review and consider approval of accounts payable.
Yes, sir. The accounts payable for May, uh, this year, uh, accounts receivable was four thousand and sixty-eight dollars and eight cents. The unpaid account, uh, was a hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine oh eight, uh, and twelve cents. The accounts payable for the month is four thousand, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Make a motion to approve, uh, accounts payable, red.
Right.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries. Item eight, consider possible action on FY 2025 bond application.
Uh, I sent out an email yesterday requesting from everybody where we were at on it, and Kate might want to talk about it.
The engineers are still preparing the bond application. It's pretty in-depth, but we need to have it finalized soon so we can submit it. But you all passed that reimbursement resolution, so any expenditures that you have will be reimbursed whenever we issue the debt.
What's the timeline? I, I'm just unfamiliar from this point to the point where it's finalized.
The financial advisor is hopeful to close on bond issue by the end of this year, so, uh, we're gonna do an expedited review with the TCEQ. Um, so hopefully they can review it in thirty, sixty days. Once they give us that order, you can go out to the marketplace, go ahead and schedule a closing, so.
Okay, good.
On that note, I, I spoke to the TCEQ last week. They contacted me and asked where we were at on the tank, and I explained to them that we were ninety-five percent, uh, complete on the design, and they should have that by the end of the month submitted to the TCEQ. And I explained to her that we were selling bonds also to pay for the tank, and she asked if we thought we'd be through by the end of the year, and I told her it was possible, but it might be longer than that, but, uh, since we're moving forward, they were, they were pleased. We're doing what we need to do.
She said through by the end of the year. Are we talking about having the bond issue through or the tank?
Yes, the, the bond issue.
Okay.
And probably we'll bid the tank somewhere around the end of the year, starting.
Sure. Okay. Okay, very good. No action needed on item eight. Uh, item nine, consider possible action on the twenty-inch water line project.
Uh, we met, we had reconstruction meeting, uh, end of last week with, uh, the contractor, Texas Utilities, that got the bid, and they are ordering all the materials and everything now. The twenty-inch water line is available, but the twenty-four inch casing that goes under the freeway, they don't know when it's gonna be, they're, they're gonna have to gear up and build it. So, uh, right now I don't have a delivery date on it, but they are, they're right now. They've, uh, they've already been awarded the job, and they're collecting all the materials and everything needed to do the job.
What's the casing?
Uh, it's a twenty-four inch HDPD casing.
Okay.
And I was telling Victor, I actually went to Crystal, Tennessee, to the factory one time, and it's, it's pretty amazing. They bring that stuff in in pellets and, and melt it down, and screw it out, and, and just make a run of different sized pipes, so. Though, my understanding is they're probably gonna have to make the twenty-four inch for the casing.
Uh-huh. No action needed on item nine. Item ten, consider possible action on water tank design.
I touched on that. Again, it's like ninety-five percent complete. Uh, the last thing we did was add the potting protection to it to make sure that it didn't rust and so on and so forth, but, uh, they feel like that they should submit the plans to the TCEQ by the end of the month, and like I said, other than that, it's a bond issue, uh, to pay for.
Okay. The other two projects we're gonna move forward on and pay for them and, and do reimbursement, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. No action needed on item ten. Item eleven, consider possible action on the West Side wastewater evaluation study.
Yes, sir. I met with them, uh, actually yesterday afternoon for about an hour and a half, and they have put everything together and very detailed plans of how much pressure and velocity and everything. They still had a few more questions to, uh, as far as pump sizing, or was it in an F-style pump or an N-style, N-style pump? So they're being very detailed about it. So they had pressure curves and all that other kind of stuff, and it, uh, they felt like they were in pretty good shape on the other side. As far as that goes, there was a few places up by Stuckey's where, uh, if all of them came, had, they came on all at the same time, you might have sixty PSI on the line, but most of the places, it was within the, the velocity and, and the pressure range. So it, it looks better than just thinking about, hey, it's a four-inch line, and we'll put two hundred fifty homes in it. The actual, the engineering study is showing it's better, and I want to say that they should have this wrapped up in a, in a month or so.
Good.
And, uh, this is where Jerry comes in, and he's doing, uh, uh, was it the teal or, uh, right across the street from, uh, what is, uh?
Well, Lake Savannah Whack?
Yeah, he's, he's, he's doing Lake Savannah Whack, then he'll go to Antewack, and then there's another one, uh, right across the street from the one that's there now, that, that they talked about, and bringing it around to ITM and so on and so forth. So they're gonna try to incorporate all of those that we do know, or say that they brought to us saying they're wanting to do, and incorporate them into the study. That way you can just click on it and say, hey, uh, this is what you're gonna have to do, or whatever. So it's, uh, it's getting close to being finished.
And it, it'll be user-friendly to where we can.
Yes.
We, we, we can look at, at diverting some, some of the sewer from going to Antewack to go to Handcomber and see what we can add, do this that way.
All of that is involved in it. Uh, we looked at going all the way to Smith Point in one time, but it, it's so comprehensive that we decided to shrink it down to just north of ITM 261 and the population area to, to finish it up and give us what we need.
But this study is not only looking at existing, it's also looking at any future.
Yes, so you should be able, and this is what they did with the hydraulic model on this side for water. Say that, uh, they, they plug in that they want to put a thousand RV park out here, and all he has to do is plug that number in, and it's gonna tell you that, hey, look, this eight-inch line's not gonna be enough. You're gonna only have twenty PSI at the end, whenever you put this in, so you're gonna have to upgrade to the twenty, and this is how we ended up with the twenty. Uh, to come across out of the plant and underneath the freeway to give us what we need, and that will give us enough for the, uh, that's a Stuckey's that they're building right up in the off-ramp there. So the twenty will provide enough for our Stuckey's and for RV park, and we have a truck stop going in out there. So all these things, uh, this is why we're putting the twenty in, and it's just a matter of plugging the numbers in that I want to build a thousand houses or two hundred houses or one house, then, uh, we had the problem on Belton Road Extension where there's like a two-and-a-half inch line going down there, and there's probably, they had one home, and now there's fifteen. So it, it broke here a while back, and the guy had low pressure. He hasn't had any problems since we repaired the line that I'm aware of. So anyway, he's back up to sixty PSI and so on and so forth, but this'll also be able to tell us that, hey, you're not gonna be able to rebuild anymore without upgrading things.
Right, right, good.
Very good. No action needed on item eleven. Uh, drainage report, Amos?
Sir, good morning, everybody. Start off by drainage report. Uh, we built a couple of, uh, float fences. We had, uh, those assembled there, two at Oyster Bottom, and then one on, uh, Spittle Top, uh, there north of Menucha, ITM. Uh, that map chose the two locations. There's two pins on the right-hand side of Oyster Bottom, and then, uh, the circle there on the left map there on Spittle Top. Uh, these are, these are customer-paid float fences. We assemble them here in the shop, and we go install them. Specifically requested, obviously by the landowner himself, whether they be a property line or cross fence or the pit or whatever. It's, uh, it's just something that we do, drainage. And then, uh, continue on as far as drainage, uh, drainage clearing does, El Mado Tributary. We go back, and, uh, we did the bottom leg that's not highlighted of this, uh, about a month and a half ago, and now we're doing the, the upper leg of it. Uh, it was completely filled with silt and lilies, bad drainage for the, that farm area there. Matter of fact, we might be finished with that early next week. Um, El Mado Tributary, we, uh, we were able to pick up pretty good on El Mado. We're continuing to work, uh, we, they have a little bit left to finish. There's one side of this, the east side of this ditch is completely done from there all the way almost to Fairview. They have a little bit left on the west side of this diagram of what I've highlighted, going back towards Canal Road. We're, and they fit, as soon as they finish that, they're pushing south. El Mado has a tremendous amount of beaver dams and log dams, and it's, uh, it usually at Fairview, it tends to walk up there all the time. Every time we get a rain, definitely nowhere to go. It's either the top road or El Mado, Fairview. So, uh, yes, diligently working on that to get El Mado cleared up, so that hopefully we have the same flow that we have here on Spittle Top, like, roll that working. Then we have, uh, Spittle Top that we've been working on. We didn't get a whole lot of progress on this particular section of Spittle Top. The machine broke and the weather, uh, I hope to have the machine fixed today. It's in the shop back there. We had some high valve issues. Uh, it had issues getting some, uh, some valve parts for it, but, uh, like I said, hopefully we can get that machine back online and get this, uh, get this section of Spittle Top, uh, done. We're working towards it in the big team. Then, uh, our double valve tributary, uh, we got the two machines, uh, three machines actually down there, the pecan unit, uh, the big belger, and a little three oh eights, uh, working on this section. It's different so bad you couldn't hardly see the ditch, uh, when they went through it. We haven't been down there in a while. And now I actually had a landowner call me and tell me thank you, uh, because the water didn't stick around this time, all the rain, so. It's nice to get those phone calls from folks. Uh, spray crews, even with the, with the weather and stuff they've been dealing with, they, they covered, uh, around eighteen miles. Mark is telling me he's gonna try to, we, we are for sure gonna get a, uh, a helicopter in the, in the light of part of the season after harvest. He is gonna even try to attempt maybe a mid-season, uh, aerial, uh, application. Uh, we'll see how that goes. Hopefully we can get some stars in line, and it helps a lot, uh, as far as our herbicide program goes on that. Uh, as a drainage crew, we, we helped, uh, for the water plant project, uh, the flocculators. Uh, we changed out the old flocculators at this west plant, uh, excuse me, the east plant, the water, the honey plant. Um, got the old flocculator out, installed a new stainless steel flocculators that's been up and running. As far as I know, it's still, still going good. Um, and then we built an attachment for those long reach Komatsu's that we have, uh, as a rake. For those log jams and stuff such as El Mado went bought materials and bought, and a, uh, the attachment, the top piece, they already have it fabricated at, through Komatsu, you can buy the piece where the pins and everything go to, and we could easily adapt that to these attachments, so we may be able to, in-house, build a couple of different attachments, uh, for our equipment to better suit our needs and not have to go spend seventy thousand dollars for these one-off buckets or attachments. So having to find them out is nice. Not always, uh, rainbows and unicorns in the, in the drainage. Uh, we did have an incident with the dragline. Unfortunately, nobody got hurt. Uh, we damaged the boom and the gantry of the dragline. It's at the shop in Beedle right now, at Beedle's in Houston right now. I talked to him yesterday. I'm at least two weeks out. I'm getting some, uh, some base boom parts. They've got the gantry together, um, again, two, two weeks plus on, on the dragline. The engine for the cat machine, the, the one that, the engine, the engine is ready. We are planning, mind, we're trying to get them out Monday to get the engine installed. The location is set, and the rain, we had it scheduled for one day, and they pulled that technician off to go. He had other things, so. We're trying diligently to get them out there, get that engine and that machine, so I can tend to other parts that we have to put out. Other than that, does Mr. Shatner have anything to add? And that's my report.
It's pretty rotten wet down that road.
It, yeah. And it just won't quit raining, man.
No, I know, I know. It hadn't rained much, but it just stays, it just, on the weekends, it's keeping it wet.
Here's a map of what, uh, they sprayed with the helicopter. Last, uh, last meeting we showed you, everything was, uh, pretty much east of one twenty-four back in the Spittle, uh, Spencer's and back over in that area. And this is what they have sprayed, uh, on the windy side as far as right now. So, uh, anyway, so, do you, do you still got the helicopter here, or is it, what's his?
So he, I was talking to him this morning. He, he talked to, to Tim about a summer, like a mid-July, tried to attempt, um, and then the fall. Uh, he's, uh, Mark's gonna try to get like two hundred plus miles done, and I, I think he can if the weather aligns, and if we can get that guy over here. Obviously, he does other things other than spray ditches for us, but, uh, that's the goal, is to get over two hundred miles done through the season with the helicopter.
Very good. Jerry, you gonna fill in on the?
Yes, sir. Uh, David, uh, took vacation this weekend, which was a pretty smart move if you think about it. Uh, we got a holiday in there, so he, he gets about nine days off. I've taken three days off, so, uh, I don't blame him. He just beat you to it. Uh, completed water and sanitary sewer installed. We installed, uh, one gravity installation, three grinder installations, uh, uh, one thousand eighteen, uh, feet of discharge line. Seven water meters were installed. New subdivision water meters installed. It's four. We changed ninety meters out this month, uh, with our own crews, so, uh, we've done a total of six hundred and eighty-three, uh, auto reads that we've put in. Uh, meter replaced, uh, uh, and other, not part of the project, we won, and as they were doing this, they pulled forty-eight meters out of the system that we don't have to go to them and read because they're not being done anyway, so. Anyway, we've taken those out of system, so a total of almost two hundred that we've taken out of there that meter reader doesn't have to go to. Uh, gravity taps, we have one, uh, that would, needs to be done. We've got sixteen grinders to put in, but it's been so wet that you go, you're gonna tear everybody's order up trying to get up to the house to put this thing in. Uh, we have one new flex grinder to put in, uh, sixteen water meters, two fire hydrants, uh, and we need to make two water line taps, and we have a couple of permits pending at tech stop, and one capacity study that's within engineering. We did have a problem with our meter reading last month, uh, on this side. Uh, the meter reader, he estimated, we called him, he estimated for two months, so everybody that, uh, he, he way underestimated, and they got a high bill. Uh, we have a program that whenever it, uh, uh, they catch it like this, it, uh, it kicks all of the ones out. It does say that they use four, four thousand gallons. If they use seven thousand gallons, it flaps it and said, hey, you know, something's wrong. These guys usually use four, and they used seven this month, so we would go back as a re-read and check it and so on and so forth. So anyway, he is no longer with us. Uh, we asked Peter, uh, to come back and read, so he's back, uh, reading, and we took and adjusted, uh, average of these people's bills out and adjusted them, and, uh, felt like we, uh, I think we got them all. If we did not, if they complain, we'll look at it and, uh, taking them and average it out and adjust theirs to, uh, to try to fix, uh, rectify the situation.
Very good. All right, anybody, uh, need to go to the secondary session, twenty-nine? No?
Uh, Kate, if you don't mind, uh, got a question. Oh, good. I talked to you about, uh, the church down there in Smith Point, about they have two separate builds, so they really should have two separate meters as well. We sent them a certified letter. I talked to their attorney and so on and so forth, so I explained kind of what they needed to do and everything, and they still haven't done it. So, and we, where do we go from here? Do, uh, they, they're supposed to, let's say you have two trailer houses and three trailer houses on one meter, so whenever they do that, we go to them and say, hey, you need to split these off. Our policy says you have to have a separate meter for every, uh, place like that, and we send them certified letters and let them know they need to do it. And it's been, it's come to a point where they still haven't done it. What do we do? Can we go ahead and charge them?
So the church has two meters for each?
They have one, but they're supposed to have two, because one's his house and one's the church. That's totally separate. So anyway, so we, I've, we contacted him and let him know that he needs to split the service at another meter, but he still hasn't done it either, even after certified letters. Do we, can we charge him double? Like charging for two basic fees? That way, even though we don't have a meter there, we're getting the basic fee, which kind of corrects, is the same thing.
Can you just send me the policy? Just, this is my first.
That was my question. What, what is our, where is it in policy?
Yeah, we have a policy that. Yeah, we have a policy that, that each individual unit has to have its own other than, uh, an RV park.
Right.
And by law, so we do have a policy and the TCQ has a policy that every, uh, every apartment, apartment complex is now, if you have 30 units, they all have to have their own meter. And the reason they did that was because if you pay $500 a month and your electricity and your water's, uh, figured into it, you don't care how much water you're using. You don't care if the air conditioner's on 65 all the time because you're paying $500. So they've come up with these rules that you have to do these things. So people will pay their own water bill and it's a way to conserve water.
The TC, the TCQ, uh, for conservation.
Yes, they, they require, yes, sir. So any, anything old, we've, we've looked at it and tried to find a way around it. But, uh, it's grandpa again for the old ones that are on one meter. But anything new is required to have their own meter.
Right. If you can just send me that.
Yes, ma'am, I sure will.
And send me the letters that we've sent them and then we can always, I can send them another one or we can speak to their attorney.
Okay.
But you can just send me that.
Uh, I spoke to their attorney and what I did is whenever we did the program, it, uh, we let them just pay a deposit. So I did not charge them to put a half another meter in. I just charged them the deposit. So I did this for them. Uh, grandpa with them, hey, look, you know, we caught this and so all I'm gonna do is charge you the deposit fee instead of the regular meter fee. And anyway, still have that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I'll send you all that information. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any board member reports today?
Yes, I'd like to elaborate on the Beltway.
Okay.
Seventy-three for years that was not corrected.
Okay.
On Beltway, six months he sent. As I all emailed, no one called him. I think he contacted you, Mr. McWilliams. He said he spoke to you.
Yeah, I thought, I think so.
Why did it take six months and years to fix these leaks that we had?
Uh, you know, I, I don't know, uh, just, it was, whenever it was brought to my attention, I took care of it. But, uh, we are working on a computer system that, you know, that all of this goes in there, but.
You have a inch-thick work order that you don't know that's been completed or incomplete.
Yes, ma'am.
Why don't we have a work order system?
It just, there's not enough staff here to, to write a program like that. It takes so much time and effort to do it.
So we're preventing to lose water on all these issues. We're losing water on all these issues. Correct?
Well, like I say, I, I, I don't, like the one on Beltway, I don't think he's been without water for six months.
No, he hasn't been out. It was below pressure and the two and a half inch line going out in the pasture emptied water.
Yes, it, it was broken out in the pasture and like I say.
It was on his side, right?
No.
Did it end up?
Well, uh, where the line was broken, uh, it, it was going across his pasture. But, uh, it was not broken on Beltway extension. So, anyway, uh, but we're trying to address the issue of how we can better track work orders and so on and so forth. These are requests are into our computer program, ADR, and tier three, trying to find a way to keep from, you know, it just, talking about the meter reader, he said, so you go into his truck and come and find out he's got a stack of work orders in there that he hasn't done. He, so the only way.
He's been out that big reader for months and continued to do with anxiety.
Okay.
So that falls under deceptive tracking practices. And all these people that are getting these outrageous bills now, it's not fair to them. And I know you've adjusted them, but it's still not fair because we were, he never was done with. And then you said everything was done. He read the meters. We couldn't fire. No, he did not read the meters. You're not gonna have a meter with zero, 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 zero. I go out there two weeks, it's already 4.8.
Okay.
So you did not, you didn't handle your issues.
Okay.
And then I just get a disturbing call from you and I'm gonna see if you're a man of your word that you told me in a very unprofessional tone that you were gonna resign at the end of this meeting.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. I, you and I talked about it and I tried to explain to you and I did everything I could to address the situation and that was not good enough. So yes, here it is. I will be glad to resign if that's what the board wants me to do.
I think that the people on Winnie will be very concerned.
Okay, okay. But, uh, uh, that, I think that would be an executive session thing for Kate. Uh, what y'all wanna do about that?
You agree on to executive session on the person now?
Okay.
So what likes to go?
All right.
And y'all can discuss whether you'd like me to be here or not.
All right. We will do that. We will, uh, adjourn for executive session.
Sorry, is that, is that the design exactly what I think?
Ano, yes.
Oh, wait, Ano.
The water plant, Ano, we had three small tanks there. We were written up, but they're rusty. They were from the original plant like 30 years ago. So they, they required us to replace one of them. So, uh, what we did, we were doing a little bit of very small tanks and we, uh.
Okay. Oh, right. I was confused. So, so the design is 95% complete?
Yes.
The money is really coming from that bond?
Exactly. That's why we're selling the bonds. I'm not agreeing because it's gonna be about a million, three or four, somewhere around there.
Okay.
In the near future.
Okay, so the bonds say everything should be close at the end of the year. So these projects, twenty-inch water project and this new tank in Ano should be completed by the tenth of August.
I would think so, yes. I mean.
So that's time.
Yeah, it just depends on the money mainly. It's, it's one error. You know, sometimes it takes a year to sell bonds just because of paperwork.
Yeah.
So as soon as, uh, we get the money, it's, we'll bid it out and have it built.
Do you have anything to say about what just went down?
No, I'm, I'm not.
You understand?
No.
If there may be statement after, they make a decision or something?
Uh.
Or you just gonna?
I, I stayed here and I did the best I could for everybody that I could do and that's all I can do. And if you look at this place, there's no secretary, there are no assistant. Mike Wills gone. I've got me and David trying to run the whole place. And I'm doing everything I possibly can and, you know, really, uh, like I say, I'm just thankful that they wanted me around for a little while and, but we'll see.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're back in session, and at this time, the board has decided not to accept your reservation, Jerry. And, uh, we will continue where we were, which was with, uh... Any more board reports? No?
No.
No? Everybody's good, I need one more motion.
Motion for chairman?
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Ah.
I have a motion, carry.